The first line will be from, there you are. And here's the CEO of the Management Social Services Administration Board. So, welcome and please come up and give a great presentation. We all have a couple other slides.
Please, the Mayor, Council and House, I'm going to ask Anna Stewart, who is the Director of the Social Services, to do the presentation.
Okay, thank you, welcome. Thank you to the Mayor and Council for giving us the opportunity to do our presentation to you this evening. So, I'm not too sure who's flipping the slides. Is that my responsibility or is that yours?
I want to say it was yours.
Yeah, there you go.
We'll put him to work.
See, you said you was putting me to work, now it's him I'm putting to work. Actually, you should know that you should never let firms touch computers. Sorry. Did you hear that? He actually said it was yours.
I'm ready for her.
I know, you guys are, you know, technology's not understood.
Will you play Lena Swardner?
Yes, no, wait. Ah, there you go. On that note. Okay, so just a little bit of historical overview. So, the total number of board members for each 10 district social services administration board is set out in the DSAF Act and regulations. So, any increase or decrease in those numbers need to have, are required to have a provincial regulation change. From a board representation model, the DSAF Steering Committee hired the Randolph Group Development Board Representation Model in 1998. This was even before I started with DSAF. So, this model was approved by the DSAF Steering Committee and by a double majority vote as defined by DSAF Act regulations in 1998. So, the current board representation model was based on population. And in 1998, the total population was 31,977. And there's an average of one board member assigned for 2,284 in population. So, the next slide basically shows you the current representation model of the board members. So, you can see here in Espinola, based on population, that two board members sit on the DSAF board. And the rest of the remaining townships are listed. That's the rest of the catchment area that we oversee. And how many board members per catchment area, which is conducive with the information I just gave you from the previous slide. So, we have a total of 14 board members that represent the management of every district service board. The board apportionment model. So, originally, the apportionment was weighted on assessment formula. And then after that, an addition of the payments in lieu, as well as the power dams were included in your apportionment model. So, originally, the weighted assessment was the person that it was based on. And then the addition of power dams and payments in lieu were broadcast. The next slide basically shows you an idea of the catchment area of the management of every DSAF. I always like to show this map and tell you that the city of Greater Sudbury is the timber and where the doughnut. And it also basically shows you with a graph on that side where the paramedic service stations are or our social housing units reside. And any blue DSAF buildings are administration and Ontario Works offices. So, we have a fairly large catchment area. We represent 45,000 square kilometres across the district. The next slide speaks to paramedic services. So, the total call volume in 2018 was 1,311, for the Espinola station only. Of those 1,311 calls, 190 were code 1, which is non-urgent. 30 were code 2, which is scheduled non-urgent. 424 are code 3, which are prompt/urgent. And 667 were code 4, which are emergent. There's been an increase of 37% in total call volumes in Espinola since the DSAF took over in 2004. And 50% of our paramedic calls involve patients over 60. So, we're going to see that percentage probably increase over time due to the aging of the mummies. Ontario Works caseloads. So, our current caseload in Espinola is 157 active cases. This encompasses 171 adults and 90 children for 261 people, or 5.2% of your Espinola population on social assistance. The 2016 census population for Espinola is 4,996. The next program is children's services. So, we have 234 center-based spaces in Espinola. 272 children are enrolled. We have 91 children who are subsidized and 184 at full fee payment. And according to 2016 census, there's 465 children between ages of 0 and 9 living in Espinola. Social housing. There are 103 social housing units in Espinola. Of those 103, 62 are operated by the DSAF and 41 units are operated by our nonprofits. The DSAF also provides 84 direct shelter subsidies to the tenants living in mostly private sector units. And 237 people are on the waitlist specifically for the Espinola units. In the 2016 census, there are 2,190 private households in Espinola, which is 103 units is 4.7% of that. When you look at our DSAF 2019 approved budget, this next slide shows you basically the percentage when it comes to provincial and municipal funding. So, for Ontario Works, 90% of the budget is provincial and 10% comes from the municipalities. Children's services, 92% of it is provincial and 8% comes from the municipalities. Social housing, 36% is provincial, 64 is municipal. And paramedic services, it's an equal split of 50% for both. The DSAF gross budget totals 37,542,988. Of that figure, 45% is due to, is paramedic service costs. 26% is Ontario Works costs. Children's services sits at 20% and our social housing is at 9%. And the interest in revenue of 99,163 is a smaller percentage up on the top. From a cost-sharing perspective, just to give you a better picture, from a funding perspective, the blue is, it actually says category name up here, but it should say provincial for the blue. So, the gross budget's 37,720,000, 72% of that is provincial funding and 28% of that is municipal funding. The next slide basically shows you a breakdown of the budget, the gross budget costs per program, a comparison of 2016 to 2019. So, in Ontario Works, we've seen an increase in children's services. We've also seen an increase. There's a slight decrease in the social housing portfolio, an increase in paramedic services. The interest revenue has not changed. So, your gross budget for 2019 is 17.79%. And the municipal share of that 17.79% is 0.72%. The next slide basically shows you a breakdown specific to Espinola with respect to 2019 expenditures. So, I basically went through the left side of this chart a little earlier in my previous slides. But we've also attached the budget figures for your FYI on the right-hand side. So, the total budgeted expenditure for Espinola is 10,409,021. And that includes all administration staff located in Espinola, as well as all the programs listed on this page. This next slide speaks to your apportionment in comparison to the budget in Espinola that you just saw in your previous slide. So, the apportionment total within all the programs is 1,187,749. And that's 11.14%. So, for every $100 invested in Espinola, you are receiving 876 in return. That's it, I feel like I want to hear this really quickly. I'm prepared to take any questions if anyone has any.
I have a couple.
Sure.
Can you back up?
Please, slide.
No, sorry, one more. Oh, no, no, that is the right one. When I look at the gross budget increase over three years, it shows that there's almost an 18% increase. That seems to be very large. Is that the result of the government requiring us to do other programming that they've downloaded to the DSAF?
My answer to that would be it's mostly because we're seeing an increase in programming and increase in funding for those programs. So, we're essentially, like, for example, children's services, most of it is provincial money. So, we don't want to return that money, so we'll take it and invest it in the community.
Okay.
So, yeah, so just the majority of the increase is provincial 100% funding. So, the municipal share over that same period went up by 0.72. The rest, in all, 100%. And I understand the question about downloading. It is additional $100,000 is the biggest piece there at 100%.
Yeah, because I noticed there is a much bigger difference in terms of the municipal share as compared to the gross budget. But it just seemed to be a very large increase. Is it one which the government wants to continue funding?
That's our take to it, too. We'll take it.
We'll take it. And then I was wondering, because I love numbers. Then the last line was that every $100 in this is being returned. I'm not sure how you calculate that.
It's basically 11%, so if you divide the DSAF with 1.1 million, we spent 10 million of this amount.
Okay.
That's basically the return. So, we're basically sure that we had recognized you were supposed to 1 million, but we spent 10 million of this amount. You sort of pieced out.
You go back to one slide. Maybe one more in there. Yeah, that one there. Okay, so what is it in Ontario Works? Is that their job? What is Ontario Works?
Ontario Works are social assistance recipients. They are in financial distress, so they're receiving financial assistance. And there's also an employment component attached to that program. So, they're required to do something and that's a negotiation agreement between them and their case manager. Do you want me, and children's services, sorry, maybe I should have explained a little bit more. I mean, some of them are pretty evident, but some of them are not. Does that answer your question for Ontario Works?
Well, yeah, a little bit. But why, yeah, the other thing I wanted to know is why the big increase in those areas, okay? Can you just identify the bigger hitters in that?
Sure, so from an Ontario Works perspective, it's more money in, let's say, for example, employment dollars that are attributed to us to give to the clients so that we can get them off of social assistance to find the shortest route to employment. Some of it could be administration. Children's services, that is a program that is mostly, there are service contracts with our childcare providers. So, for example, we have a few here in the area, so our children are future, for example. We contract out with them to either provide fee subsidies to our families to provide them with childcare services for families so that they can go to school, go to work. So, essentially, the DSAF will sort of back-end the funding to the childcare center so that they can be operational, pay for staffing wages, pay for, you know, whatever they need on the backend, go on and go forth. And then from a front-end standpoint, from a DSAF perspective, we do provide families with fee subsidy, which means that either their full childcare could potentially be paid depending on the financial circumstance or partial payment.
Would the change in the minimum wage rate have a big impact on that number? Would it have a, because I would have out the cost of maybe all those services.
So, the minimum wage for children's services, it might have changed slightly for the providers if they weren't paying their staff quite that minimum wage. So, that might have gone up, but not much. Most of our childcare providers are paying their staff just a tad bit more than minimum wage. From an Ontario Works perspective, if they make more money, they are no longer on social assistance.
Okay. Just to be, we're also seeing with that, with the minimum wage, we start a lot more people actually working, receiving earnings, and that number of clients actually has gone down now. And they're earning more money. They're definitely earning more money than ones that are working, but we have a lot less working. So, again, maybe that's a negative impact, the minimum wage is much shorter.
Yeah.
And then was sort of what was forecast by many economists that the minimum wages go up, but you have a lot fewer people be working.
That's right.
Yes.
On a value, you're right. Did you say that the ones that you supply money to or that you give money to, they have to have a job of some type? Is that what it is, or?
No, they have to be wanting to be doing something. So, for example, if mom with two single, sorry, a single mom with two kids, the kids are in school and she can't just sit there and we put her kids on the bus and wait for them to come home.
Right.
She can either choose to go to Cambray College to do some education. I'm just giving you an example for this occasion. She'll go to Cambray College for some upgrading or educational component. Or if she's ready to work, let's find you a part-time job so that you can work during that time period that your children are in school. So, that's just one example that I'm giving you, but.
And in the meantime, she gets the social assistance.
Correct, exactly. And possible supports to be able to participate, let's say, in, at Cambray College. So, if she doesn't have the proper clothing, you know, we'll sort of kind of get her started in that sense.
And the child will be covered with medication and so on and so forth as well?
To an extent, some benefits are covered, some not.
Is it because of the different job or the different amount of money they're making? Is that it?
No, no, all social assistance recipients are basically treat, have the same opportunity, I guess I could say. But depending on your circumstances, because you need something and the other client doesn't need it, doesn't mean that all of you get it.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
Any additional questions? Okay, well, we thank you both for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have a second delegation this evening. And we have Nicole Lee and John Burnetti. They are both from the Espinola regional council. So, welcome to the team.
And I would like to thank Council for the invitation to come. I was here about two years ago. So, there's some few employee members that are here and some that know us very, very well and are part of the Healthcare Recruitment Committee and have been either currently or former board members. So, hospital board members as well. John Burnetti actually is the Director of the Espinola Area Family Health Team. Which is a different corporation, but it's all managed by the Council. So, thank you very much for inviting us. And we have a slide presentation due to the essence of time. This slide presentation is really just some basic information about who we are, what we do, and what we serve. So, I'm not going to go through the whole presentation because I think that's something that you can read on your leisure. We're just going to get down to the brass tacks. That's what I do. So, Healthcare Recruitment Committee has been in place for a very, very long time. I have been in Espinola for about 15 years now and it started way before my time. And this tri-party committee has been essential in actually stabilizing recruiting and retaining healthcare professionals, specifically physicians to our community. And you might remember previous election, about five years ago, the election, you know, the town election. Your platform is probably based on trying to find physicians to cover this community. And last year's election, I don't believe that that was probably even on your docket as an election platform. So, it just goes to show you the amount of work that the Healthcare Recruitment Committee has done. But it's really because of the forward-thinking and the partnerships of community leaders, such as yourselves and your predecessors, to build the healthcare complex that we have today. Because we're not just a hospital. You know, we have housing, we have, well, we have retirement living, we have housing. We have a whole family health team with a host of all kinds of services that John's going to relay. We have a nursing home, we have a community lab, we have community diagnostics, sleep lab, not to mention any of our emergency department, which people still come out from Sudbury, come out to our emergency department, and then of course, the acute care facility. So, it's very, very impressive that the facility that we have. And if you are paying attention to obviously all the provincial legislative changes as the inception of Ontario Health Team. And so, we have applied as an Ontario Health Team in our community because we meet all the elements of it. Because we really are a basket, we're a one-stop shop of healthcare. So, what are we doing moving forward? We actually did our strategic plan. We're hoping to launch it come September. So, we thank you for all of you that may or may not have participated, but we thank you for that. And our biggest challenge, actually, when we're talking to the providers, is our lack of space. And we're running out of space. And why are we running out of space? Because we've done such a great job recruiting and retaining healthcare professionals. So, for example, we have 49 doctors actually working in Espinola right now that are credentialed. So, hard to believe, but it's 49. We actually had 27 students, residents and medical students that went last year. And we actually have 34 booked this year. So, how do you support students? Well, we also, we have to have the facilities to support. We have, we have to have the team, but we have to have housing. And housing has been a gap. And the township, I have to thank the township in the past that raised the challenge. We built a home and you helped us with that. But then economics times hit and unfortunately, that home had to be sold. So, to respond to that, the Healthcare Recruitment Committee was, you know, renting spaces for doctors, all the rest of it. And it's just like a crazy amount of money. So, the hospital turned around and bought a house. So, these are just some of the expenses that we're incurring. Because if you're having all these students coming in, they're from all across the province. And so, they need a place to stay and they're here for weeks at a time or a month at a time. Christmas, everybody wants Christmas off. We are very, very blessed to have Dr. Pakes and his wife come. They're both credentialed physicians that actually keep our emergency hospital going over Christmas. And they bring their whole family and they occupy the house for two weeks. So, these are just some of the healthcare recruitment retention expenses that we incur. And as well, when we do get students coming in and doctors coming in, we want them to join the complex. And we want them to go to the ski hill or the golf club. So, all of these things are retention and recruitment strategies. So, we've been very, very successful. One thing is, like, it's interesting, DSAF, I have to thank for the presentation, you guys have the luxury of increasing taxes to get revenue. So, we can't. So, we get one funding source really and that's it. And that's the provincial government. And they really only fund 80% of our operations. So, we have to find 20% somewhere else. So, we've become very creative over time. And in our creativity and our excellent financial management, we've also subsidized other programs. So, back in 2004, it was recognized that we only had 30 nursing home beds to serve 14,000 people. So, do you know how many are on the island, for example, with the same amount of demographics? 180 beds. So, the leaders of this community at that time thought, okay, we got to build another 32 beds. Fantastic idea. So, now we have 62 nursing care beds. That's great. But the funding formula, and those that was had on the hospital board, recognized that since that nursing home has been opened, the hospital has subsidized the nursing home $60,000, key load deficit. So, that's a lot of money. And our income from the province isn't exactly as robust as we would like it to be because of the fiscal realities. Another large piece is we offer community lab services. Because there's no life labs or private lab in this community. So, the hospital provides those services. We can't bill OHPED for those services. So, that's another subsidy of at least a couple hundred thousand dollars a year to make sure that people who are getting care here don't have to drive to Sudbury to get their lab work. So, these are just some of the programs that are at our cost pressures. So, that's why the Healthcare Recruitment Committee and the tri-party agreement with Donatar and yourselves and us is fantastic. And we are just asking for that ongoing continued support and recognizing that our fiscal realities are getting tougher. And I'm going to turn it over to my partner now because he's going to be talking about building a healthy community and how our partnerships perhaps can grow.
All right, so thank you, everyone. Nicole did a really great job, I think, of explaining sort of some of the things that I took out to with respect to the numbers of physicians and students specifically in our community. In the last year, the Healthcare Recruitment Committee has sort of informed that the primary care physicians at the family health team has all have developed a lag, so a learning education group through NOS, which is the School of Medicine, which has become very, very successful, which really has a lot of the physicians specifically in primary care, which the family health team is. But there's also some representation from the hospital and through the emergency department. The physician assistants is also joining as well. So, essentially, they're getting together and looking at various initiatives, monthly education sessions for themselves, which can then be just sharing that experience of bringing those new students to the community to ensure that we're staying current with everything that's going on and really offering the most robust service that we can to these students. Bring them into the community because we know succession planning is very important. We've been very successful in recruiting physicians over the past few years, having a 2015 grad, a 2016 grad, a 2017 grad joining the Ben Health Team. But the work needs to continue to be ongoing. We know that, like I said, I mean, physicians, I mean, we're doing very well right now. But I mean, we're one physician away from being short, essentially, again, right? So, we need to always be ensuring that we are providing the best service that we can to these students that are coming in, offering them a great facility, state-of-the-art. I mean, it's a really tough task and I really thank you for being part of that, free part of that solution. So, I'm looking into some of the things that Nicole mentioned, so building a healthy community. And as she also mentioned, we do have an Ontario Health Team application in, to the ministry. We're hopeful to hear something back within the coming months. I don't think that the provincial government was expecting to receive the number of applicants that they did. So, essentially, there's roughly about 150 applications that they received. Initially, they were thinking that early June, there would be some announcement around which communities would be successful towards moving on to the next step. It looks like those timelines have been delayed slightly just by the sheer volume of applications that they need to sort of work their way through. One of the areas that we're very, very fortunate to have, which again is a big piece of this Ontario Health Team, is the Espinola area Community of Care Planning Network, which essentially is a table that was brought together about four or five years ago, which was led by the Northeast Lynn. And initially, it was brought together, we were looking at the processes for hospital discharges and working with all the agencies within the community around what it looks like for each of those agencies. So, if somebody's in hospital, is going to get his discharge, what does that mean to your, to your agency? What does that mean to your agency? How can we do a better job of ensuring that we're providing the best possible care in the community? So, from there, we decided that we really needed to keep the conversation going. It wasn't something that we wanted to kind of have a one-off event. So, since then, we've been meeting monthly for roughly the last four years and have really developed a robust network of providers that are coming together. Our large table meets once a month to discuss various initiatives. And probably about two years ago, we identified that mental health was really starting to take over a big chunk of the meeting. So, we said, you know what, timeout. We need to develop a subcommittee that really is looking at deep diving into the mental health piece. So, a couple of years ago, we developed the Mental Health Subcommittee. Additionally, since then, as I'm sure many of you are aware of, home community care often ends up being an issue for a lot of people. And there's a lot of concern around, you know, the delivery model and how that's sort of, how that's sort of working. So, again, we've sort of, you know, shoot off another committee and developed the Home Community Care Subcommittee slash Palliative Subcommittee. So, there's been some amazing work that's been happening in this community from a palliative perspective, specifically, I mean, sort of stemming from around the funding that was received through the, through the provincial government to create a hospice suite here in our family health team. I can suggest, if any of you have not had an opportunity to come and do a tour of the hospital and see the beautiful suite that's been created, please do so. Again, something that's just such an essential service that we need within our community. And it's often, you know, somebody is in that room and there's a very extensive waiting list for patients to come into that room as well. So, through the hospital, collaborative efforts between the hospital and primary care and the Northeast Lynn Home Community Care, we have a really robust group that is working on the palliative piece and ensuring that those patients are managed out in the community so that, again, ensuring that utilization and that transition for patients when they go from being palliative to requiring hospice care, we really developed something and some really great wraparound services for them. But essentially, what we're feeling for our next steps, probably about four or five months ago, the Northeast Lynn approached the Community of Care Planning Network table and asked us if there was an opportunity for the hospital and your family health and primary care to look at taking over services of, from a, from a home or community care perspective. And we said, great idea, something that we'd certainly be interested in, but timeout, we are not experts. We need to have somebody come in and help us develop what this new model could potentially look like in order to ensure that we're providing the most appropriate service for everybody in our catchment area. So, we were able to receive some funding from them and have found successful applicants who will be working with the Home Community Care Subcommittee around developing a new model, a new care model for the Espinola area. So, Derek Graham, who's a former CEO of the hospital, middle current, will be working with us. He was also the same, same person that developed our first joint strategic plan. So, this is first in its existence, a family health team and the hospital sort of amalgamating and developing a joint strategic plan. So, Derek was heavily involved in that process and led our community through that. And we've since agreed to keep him on and sort of lead this next process for us, which again, will be a very much needed service where we could potentially see what we can do to improve home, home care service delivery within the catchment. So, my ask here today is to think that it's, we're at a point where we would really, really love to have some type of representation from Council or someone from the town joining the Community of Care Planning Network table. I think that it would be a really great opportunity for us to share some of our ideas, the things that are happening. And at the same time, for Council to get, again, have a really good understanding of what all healthcare providers. what all healthcare providers that are in our community are sort of up to, right? I mean, it would be great information for it to be brought back to this table. I mean, like I said, we're encompassing everybody that has anything to do with, with healthcare. Additionally, the OBP are present, there's representation from the schools. So there is, it's a, it's a really a great group. And like I said, we would really love to have somebody from council join us monthly. And if that means joining a larger table, that's great. Or if we see you're interested for somebody to join one of the subcommittees as well, we would be open to anything. And just seeing the changes that are happening sort of from, from a provincial perspective, I don't think anybody really knows exactly what that's going to look like or where things are going to go. But it seems like there's going to be the need for more involvement from, from municipalities around how healthcare delivery is going to happen. So from your perspective, I think it would be some really great education for you to have a better understanding sort of what's happening within our, within our, within our community and helping you make some educated decisions around how best to spend some of those dollars that are going to be the expectation of the council to make some decisions around how that's going to look. So that is, that is essentially my ask, to come and join us. And we, like I said, we welcome any and all who would be interested in the larger table or any of our subcommittee tables as well. So thank you.
Well, thank you both for coming. We don't have anything on the agenda tonight in terms of working at appointing anybody to the tables, but it's really good that we're talking about you guys over there because we have to develop a community safety plan as part of the process. And for sure, some of the work that you're doing will tie in wonderfully with what we already developed. So for sure, there will be conversations that are going to be going on in the future. So we look forward to that and look forward to having a better partnership. So sure, council depression, go ahead.
If the lens are restructured or modified, what is your opinion? How would that affect?
How would it affect us? Well, that's where we applied for an Ontario Health Team. So then we would be essentially recipients of the funding dollars that would go to healthcare for our community and catchment area. So that's why we are ahead of the game and trying to get that application out there. And that was a hospital board and Community of Care Planning Network decision and Ben Health Team board unanimous. And our nonprofit seems housing as well. So that's, that's where we're getting out there ahead of the game. We have to roster. Oh, sorry.
Does the provincial move on eliminating employees to one percent? Does that affect any of your employees?
Are you referring to the collective bargaining and so forth?
Or all around, actually?
We don't know yet because the legislative, legislation hasn't passed.
Yes.
So we are waiting for guidance from the Ontario Hospital Association as to what that impact will be. But it certainly may impact us if it does get passed as it is. And it would be retroactive, we understand too. So yeah, that's how it, we don't know, we really don't know how that will affect us.
When we had our meeting with the ministry back in January, we talked to them about our medical lab, okay, the fact that we can't charge for that. Have we heard anything back at all from the ministry and that, or they just sort of ignored, ignored that?
Well, actually through the OHA, I belong to a small rural northern council and I actually put that back on the agenda for next week's discussion because, okay, so what's happening here? We've done a lot of work in that file with the previous government, so does the current government have an appetite? So we're not so sure. So that is something that I continue to chase down. But thank you for your advocacy. Thank you for coming to talk about that. Any other questions?
You could let us know what committees you want us to sit on if you have any specific points and when your meetings are as well.
Sure, so I could certainly share that information. Like I said, I think that initially it would be great to have representation of the large table because again, all of our subcommittee work that is happening, everything is embedded through the large table. So that may be at least a really good starting point. And then if council identified there was somewhere, you know, if there was another piece that they had interest in from there, but my suggestion would be to start with the large table, which is the fourth Thursday of every month. We will be breaking for summer, which again, just through everybody's holidays, it makes it really difficult to host any meetings that have any real value. But if, like I said, so the fourth Thursday starting in September, if there were somebody or as many of you that would be interested in being involved, and I would be happy to say it would be really fantastic.
What time, one thirty?
So from one thirty to three thirty.
When will the park be officially open?
Well, soon, they're building these egos right now.
It's a big thing, but at that.
Yeah, it is a good thing. And you know, to add to that as well, we are looking at not just healthcare, we're looking at building a healthy community and maintaining a healthy community and that's in our strategic plan. So that's something that we're looking towards. And you know, I think the second largest employer of Espinola, I, I believe we're a pretty strong economic driver as well and we bring some really good talented professionals to this community as well. So, so I think there's a lot of good news and I think our complex has been fairly successful and we have to thank council for that, for your support. We really appreciate your support. So are you going to come to the groundbreaking opening for the park?
What do you say?
Well, we are going to wait till the fall because there's an awful lot of planting to do and we want to do it right. So we're hoping to have seniors face creep social the next few weeks in the park. But again, we have to make sure that it's safe and it's safe for them and all of the staff are forward and so you could drive by, fancy companies to us. But the seniors are loving it, they're, they're enjoying watching it. It is, it is a really good news story. Good. Yes, thank you. Okay, moving on, we have question period. Do you have a question, we'll return to that one. Okay, so you know, we'll move on with our consent agenda. Is there any items that anybody wishes to ask? Okay, so the motion is moved by Councilor Foster, seconded by Councilor Newplesy. It is all eleven day ones, you have to inclusive, including part one inside the agenda. So just we'll go through all of the items. The opposite of minutes, we have a regular council meeting on the May of twenty eighth and a special meeting with council on the twenty eighth. Okay, boarding, venue reports, we have the Espinola Public Library Board meeting on April eighteenth. I have a comment on that one. It looks like the library was working on their strategic plan as well. Is there anything out of the strategic plan that council should be aware of?
Of the strategic plan?
Yes.
I don't believe so.
So we have, no matters arising from mitigational recessions, we have no business arising from board committees. So we have all those files. Bylaw number twenty nine, twenty three nineteen, being a bylaw at the time of Espinola to confirm proceedings of the caps like me in the twenty eighth. Bylaw twenty nine, twenty two nineteen, being a bylaw at the time of Espinola to embed. Bylaw number twenty eight, eighty four nineteen. And bylaw number twenty nine, twenty four nineteen, being a bylaw at the time of Espinola to execute a agreement between the town of Espinola and Royal Court. Any comments or questions from those? Okay, and we have received the two reports. The first one is the Manitou and Tewa District Services Board First Quarter Activity Report for twenty nineteen and the Public Health Subgroup District Committee for twenty nineteen. Any questions or comments on those? Okay, so a call motion, all in favor of accepting items, we want to have to, I'll keep the part one agenda about. Okay, and we'll move on to the other of our regular agenda. Item G one is the recommendation regarding government of Ontario e-learning. This is one that we discussed for the last council meeting. It was moved by Councilor Foster, seconded by Councilor Newplesy. It reads, be resolved that the council for the town of Espinola supports the township of McNab Breside Resolution Number one thirty-one twenty nineteen regarding the government of Ontario for e-learning. And furthermore, this motion will be sent to Ontario Premier's Up Board, Minister of Education Lisa Thompson, Michael Mantha, MDP, Carol Hughes, MP, Amyrow and Roma. So I'll open this up for any comments. Councilor Foster?
The motto for the McNab Breside Resolution talked about the fact that, and this is important for the audience, they talked about the fact that a lot of the northern rural communities don't have adequate internet service. So those students would not, would be at a major disadvantage to when it comes to having to mandatory e-courses. So they're really suggesting that the government do not implement this until they've upgraded the rural internet services to make it such that people could properly do these courses.
Yeah, and I'll add to that as well. There's lots of concerns in the high school of students being reading courses. We already have a number of students that try and they cannot complete the courses. And to mandate students to take for e-learning courses throughout their high school year, one per year, there is no information in terms of who's going to be in charge of these courses, how these courses are going to be offered, whether it's going to be teachers that are involved, whether it's going to be some private corporation that's just doing it and assessing students. So there's a lot of concern in the schools and that translates to concerns of the students that are in our, in our city, right? Or in our town. And I feel very strongly about this resolution and I'm, I'm thanking, thanking you guys for the consensus to be able to bring that to the table tonight. Any other comments? Okay, so all in favor of this motion? Okay, and that is Carrie. Thank you. Okay, and our second motion is moved by Councilor Newplesy, seconded by Councilor Foster. So this is a notice of motion. Is it supposed to be a notice or shouldn't it be? Just cross out. No. Okay, so this is a regular motion because it is on our agenda. Be resolved that whereas the town of Espinola values inclusion as established in the strategic plan of twenty thirteen, and whereas the citizens of Espinola who are lesbian, gay, bisexual or transgender LGBT are equal and important members of our, of this society, whereas many Ontario communities are celebrating their citizens who are LGBT by declaring Pride Week, Pride Week, raising awareness for equal rights and equality for individuals globally. Therefore, be resolved, council declares June twenty first to twenty eighth Pride Week in the town of Espinola. Looking for any comments? Okay, all in favor? Okay, that motion is carried. Okay, in terms of correspondence for information purposes, there's no specific correspondence. Information we have previously served needed to cancel. If you require hard copy, you can get it at the municipal office. So that's a check register for May twenty nineteen and senior Ontario correspondence regarding options. Okay, email's coming up in August and then we'll move on to mayor council reports. Would you like to start?
Well, I just have a question.
Okay.
I wanted to know if the hiring freeze was still on? Does anybody know if it is?
The hiring freeze, from my, from my understanding, is that that was for the previous term of council.
Okay.
And I will ask for a C L, is that not the understanding from the resolution that was passed? Yeah, it was discussed by corporate services. Okay, so we will be going back through corporate services. It was discussed, I wasn't able to look at it in the last corporate services, I was speaking with people in the range. So it is up for discussion in the corporate services.
Okay, then I would like to have a notice of motion passed. Whereas corporate, corporate services was looking into amend the hiring policy to increase council oversight with regards to either hiring new or replacement of an employee. Therefore, be resolved that council introduces the hiring freeze until such time as the amendments to the hiring policy can be completed.
Okay, and how would you like that dealt with?
Well, I need a secondary. Thank you. Now I guess you're going to have to get it on the table.
Okay, so the first motion that we take, and I don't have my procedure by law with me, but if I'm recalling correctly, is whether we are going to entertain this motion in case of anything, or refer to another committee or a subsequent council meeting. Okay, so.
First, we have to get it on the table.
Yeah, so we'll go to open in terms of whether it was to hear the motion now, all in favor? Okay, that will need a two thirds. So that's fine. Okay, so Carrie's and then London's. Okay, so that is the notice of motion now with Carrie, so we need to do resolution. Yeah. Now I just need a moment, a secondary. Okay, so. Yeah, give me a moment, I'll. Okay, so I have a brief, the notice of motion and I want a secondary for this. So let's go put this on the table as a motion. Okay, so it is moved by Councilor Newplesy, seconded by Councilor Malat, and it is the same thing, whereas a corporate service is looking to amend the hiring policy to increase council oversight with regards to either hiring new or replacement of an employee. Therefore, be resolved that council moves introduce hiring freeze until such time as the end of the hiring policy be completed. You have the first opportunity to speak on this motion, Councilor Newplesy.
I'm sorry.
You have the first opportunity to speak on this motion.
It's so exploratory.
It's self-explanatory.
Okay. Councilor Malat?
Okay.
Hey, anybody else? Councilor Foster?
That item came up with Corporate Services, and we deferred that to the
June 25th. I was there, yeah.
And I think that's adequate, okay, so that's just my personal opinion. If you know of any particular job that we shouldn't be hiring for, otherwise, why would you just not address it as it comes up after next week?
Okay, I'm going to speak to this issue as well. I am aware that it was at the last corporate service meeting, like I said, I was trying, I wasn't able to make that meeting. I was also aware that it is also coming to council. It is, at that time, it is going to have the full background and staff report that will accompany it, as well as any minutes from that corporate service meeting will be coming to council at the same time. So I don't see any need to support this motion at this point in time, because I do believe that this motion is a little bit premature. I'm also concerned in terms of increasing council oversight to hiring replacement employees. If the employee has already been budgeted for and is already in allotment, in terms of what our application that we've approved in our budget, hiring a replacement employee does not actually fall under the government's perspective, that will fall under our management perspective. So we are then overstepping our bounds by putting a hiring freeze onto the replacement of an employee that we've already worked, the employee that already in the community. So I have some very big concerns, and I know that's something that I cannot support in this motion, especially in with that it have not had the background of any discussion or any staff reports to back this up.
I had to point out, we went through this once before where we passed a motion relating to building services, and then following me, we ended up rescinding it. And I think it just, in this case here, it's only temporary, okay, but it's really not good process to turn around and insert these when we haven't got the staff information to make the decision, which is not the process, that's just my personal opinion.
Okay, Councilor Duplessis?
Yes, we've been looking at revamping the hiring policy for a while. It's never came to council yet, and I think this is a good way to get it there.
Okay, you also identified that you were aware that it's
Yeah, I did identify that, yes, so just to make sure that it does.
This doesn't say that.
Oh, well, it does, because if you, you just read it, and it says, until we can amend the policy. So it does say it, June 25th, we should be able to amend the policy at that point?
Not necessarily.
Well, that's true, okay, so.
Councilor Duplessis?
I brought that up at Corporate Services, because I felt it was council's responsibility, whether it was replacement or a full-time, to have that, to be involved in that. That's all it was, and we had been, mentioned we had done that before. It wasn't under hiring freeze, or it wasn't under quota or anything, we had a good debate over. And I gather what Ray is saying, until we get to two weeks from now when we're going, and it's simple, the notice of motion is simple, it's to be involved with council of hiring full-time, which is in there now, but adding any replacements. So I gather what Councilor DeFour is saying is that from now till the 25th, when we look at amending the policy that he wants to hire. Is that right?
Yes. Well, until there's an amendment made, this is what I said on the on the motion, until we make an amendment to the hiring policy.
And on the next council meeting, if there's no amendments? Because
Then it just keeps running until there is one.
Policy stands, and we're okay with the policy. So we were saying that there's no amendment, we're fine with the policy, but then
We're going to be voting for an amendment, so all I'm saying is if we don't have an amendment, like, let's say we're all happy, we don't need an amendment, then at that point in time, it'll revert back to the way things are. There should be no problem.
Well, I have a, I have a big problem
Well, okay.
with council, we're just down in terms of looking at things that are in the budget already, and imposing hiring freezes on replacement of individuals.
Well.
Because that position has already been improved, that's why we have that position in our staff. And I think if we step into the bounds of taking over management functions, we are not doing our job as councillors, and we are not letting our managers do their jobs as councillors, as, sorry, as managers.
I understand.
As you
As a fiduciary member of council, as being a councillor, we have fiduciary responsibility to the people. And there are times when we hire people, I mean, that's just hires, this happens all over the place, even though there's a replacement, that you could have a replacement for that person, maybe council at this time feels that that replacement shouldn't be there. And it would be council's will then to say no. The way it stands now, the compliments can be met anytime without council's acknowledgement.
Because that's our job, we pass the budget. Right, that's what I'm saying.
Well, it's my job, it's our job to oversee.
It's our job to oversee the budget, that's the fiduciary responsibility and not something that we have passed. So I think there are some great concerns about that, it is a decision of
Yeah.
That I am very strongly opposed to this motion, because I know this is very likely that governments' management is, the government's version of management.
So can I be, can you be clear with me here?
Yes.
So you're saying that if we make a budget and things change, we shouldn't change that budget, we should just keep on going in the same way?
That's all I said.
No, I'm asking because
If there's, if there's something that you wish to change staff levels, then we have, then we have an议决meeting, because we will be discussing specific personnel about changing where our staff levels are. And there's a process for that. And you just say there's a hiring freeze just so we can have hiring freeze and look at every single job that gets posted. This could be a part-time casual replacement person that will be doing, doing any of the complex. That has nothing to do with us and the management of the complex, that's the complex management that is responsible for that.
Okay, I'm not going to argue with you, John, sorry, but I disagree. I mean, not, not cool, or we better disagree a bit with you there, and
I do suggest that you do continue to take a look at the difference with the events. I know that we have a version that not found in the
Well, I've done a lot of reading, and I can tell you that we have a lot of
I will
A lot to say about anything.
Our motion, all in favor? Motion is carried. Okay, so can you change council with one? Councilor Malat?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Well, thanks, John.
Police Services Board, Jill and I are looking at applying for grants, $75,000 a year for three years for Community Safety and Wellness Plan. That is mandated by the province, and we can maybe get some money by the key services board that we can then use to develop that.
Okay, I was going to mention that as well, and the grants in total amounts is $225,000 a year. We're hoping to get that grant in very shortly, and hopefully that will have an allocation through that grant process. The only thing I want to mention it because I'm not very experienced, but we walked the dog, right? It's held this past Sunday that I participated, and our community was able to raise I think the total was just under $800. I misunderstood, I don't know.
$2,000.
$2,000 now.
$2,000, $5,000 from the fleet that hired
Point of order, she hasn't been calmed by the chair, and she hasn't
Excuse me, you don't have the, and if you're going to call it, you have the ready
Right, if you can tell me to be quiet, it's not
Yeah, yeah, thank you. So the amount then is in dispute, but it's heard here and not on the legal, because there are a number of different fund businesses that have contributed here, but I know many of you contributed to what I had raised for that. So thank you, that happened on Sunday. And the other issue here, or the other things I attended as there is the All Funders Society, our founders in events, this past Sunday at the Espinola Hall. It was not widely attended by the public, and I have a feeling that it was because it was a very nice day out. But I participated in a lot of the events that they had going on, like we had saying, walking along and all, and and so that was an event that can be viewed. And I would encourage all our captains to take the time and participate in as many events as possible. I know I did not see everybody have the some, I know we all have but I strongly, terribly appreciate it, and I know Councilor Duplessis, you had said that you're interested in helping other anything on the therapy at Gardens Hospital. It's a great way to be involved in the community, and it's part of our role, and so I urge you to act continue to raise, see what's going on and participate actively. I have nothing else?
I, just a question clarification. I got an email, so Community Services Meeting on June 18th is cancelled. What about the Special Council Meeting on the 18th, is that cancelled altogether?
I don't believe it is.
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we do have the future meetings, which Councilor Malat is bringing up, we're going up there. So we, we still have, so the community service meeting is not going to be uncompleted. We do have a special meeting at 4:00 p.m. And then our next council meeting is on June 25th. And then we will have committee before meeting at 6:00 p.m. at night as well. I don't have anything else. So I have a motion to the meeting, moved by Councilor Malat, moved by Councilor Duplessis. It was already the council's at 8:05 p.m. over there.
Jill, did you get that letter about the AMO meeting? And choosing which show you're going to?